I'm talking.
Thank you, thank you all for coming. Okay. First on the agenda is public comment. Anybody have anything? Okay. It's your first. Yep.
I think there's so long. I've been told boards. Three years to the scale. They initially look like a city car. And there are the many individuals. We're in the picture that two of my people. On March thirty first, I just said the moment I had my. I think they opened it up. But my classroom, we met, the painting in the lights destroyed. But it's not just. Off the pole in the paint. I go in my back. Listen to this. Right into my living room with them and my dad. They should talk me out. I'm asking you gentlemen, that. That authorization for that. You know, building B is now up for rent. And it's like, why? And he said he had. And he went to all meetings to get through. So, um. The parents fit in their trucks. We're just rolling with this truck. Outdoors, standing things. And I think that was in my driveway. I don't think there exists. I don't bother anybody, anybody from this township or anybody else. So, once again, our family has lived there six years. And I can't believe that I'm already there. So, last thing I want to say is, please do. Um. It is. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else?
Still, we watch myself obviously very clear on your voice. Uh. It's simple, but we have to find out as each boat we catch. About what about. From the. It's purple. He's bringing all. There can be. He's been deeper. He's like, it doesn't seem. We can't even get, you have a camera out there now, which is. We're right now. It is something that lets me choose ignore. And the other neighbor works at stores, says the same thing, but he didn't know. Uh. I don't understand how they become a township. Perfect. But. Oh, back to the man who's true, man who's true. Look at my girls and then into everything here. We're not a session. The top of these families, two days a week. And that's only one business that's in one of that. I understand. Um. Well, it's been dealt. But I don't understand, and it reflects this by bathrooms and the outbuildings. So, we're just asking for forgiveness, not permission. Can we all just go and build what we want? And just come to you and say, oh, forgive us. We'll just offer it if we don't need it.
Well, well, thank, thank you for your comment. Yes, I very appreciate it. Okay, next.
Brian Landis, one twenty-five August. As you were already saying, most of the points were hit, but. Uh, my favorite statement in the work is, I don't like a little bit of big. Uh, sixteen kids here. Uh, they did this, uh, ask for approval. Variants is great. Through. Um, since there shall be no commercial activity, you can propose pullbars. Other than sorting classical, classic vehicles, they can use various features. Not going to show it for pullbars. Other than the story process. But also we have the traffic impact study, as we said, it's anticipated three employees would be impacted pretty much. Um, so again, it's, it's one of these things where they, they fight variants, it's the way we got the play. Um, we could go by there on Sunday. Building has four parts in space, which clearly only four parts are getting that flat. Um, so again, just wanted to voice my. So, but, uh, you should not, uh, create.
Yeah, that is very common. I do have one, uh, point to follow up that. Which might be. Okay. That's all right. Uh, just wanted to clarify that we are listening to everybody. Uh, one clarification, this goes to the zoning hearing board. If doesn't get approved by the township supervisors, we can weigh in on it, but it's not our decision to make. The way that the rules are set up in Pennsylvania versus Comfort Ward. The zoning hearing board that they went to before makes that decision, not us. But we make recommendations and leave them have a voice, but it's not our official decision. So, we can re-listen and we can advocate, but we don't make the decision at this point. Just to make sure that they're, they're listening, but we can't actually say yes or no. If somebody up at the zoning board, so that it's taken out of the counter of that, that supervisor's decision. But it may no prefer this in one way or the other, when it goes in, when it goes in, when it goes in. But yeah, listening. Thank you. I, I just wanted to share one comment regarding to that. I don't appreciate them. Here is the president. I can't have time. Start to follow the evidence, but the path to go through the bottom of the path. Which they, the zoning hearing board was the top, which is true. They will have chance to. Yes. To be. And what I'm not about, that's the apple pay free options you score. And if you go back and listen, you'll be able to find them. Good idea. No, sir. So, we will, we will let this work out through the process. Okay? But I, all of them know how we feel. We, we feel the pain and kind of Jesus. So, let's, let's continue to stay aboard this, I think, zoning hearing board, which is meeting in the town. Seven, maybe seven. Maybe seven. Okay? Okay. Okay, is there any other public comments? Okay, if not, then both other comments. And items. And I would like to move forward. We were going to be announcing that the twenty twenty-five fishing derby. Um, so that this is about to happen, so the record and the guy. And this year is a. Uh, by a youngster. And I would like to read on this. Five years. Five years old, forty-one and fifty. Okay. Five years old, eighteen and fourteen. And yet, that's a, that's years old, eighteen inch. Thank you. Oh. All right. I also do want to announce too, that we did have a winner for the holiday house piece at family at Ford. That was raffled off on Saturday. Uh, she's not here, I don't think, but Samantha Morrison is, was the winner, the family Morrison family. And, uh, it will be picking out the tellers though. So, congratulations to her. That is all happy, good evening to fishing birdies. Um, I was, and I do want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you, to everybody that contributed, everybody that came out. Eager money. Uh. Dealt with the cold raw brother. The partner recommended Dave. This is what they did to make this happen. So, I want to say thank you to everyone. She was definitely for your viewing, officer, kind of app, appreciate it. Okay. It was a success. All the rain and crappy weather, we still had eighty children. Definitely. Ninety-five. Okay, very good, thank you. Moving forward, the sound agenda is not about the east. And it's the, uh, March nineteenth meeting day, so we're planning to do it. That's for a release. Or this is part of the. It works. Nine to three four. And, uh, the treasures report, I'll, I'll ask Mr. Looking Top to read that, please.
Uh, the treasures report, as of March thirty first, two thousand twenty-five. The general fund, one million five hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-seven cents. Highway aid, three hundred and thirteen thousand seventy-five dollars and seven cents. Open space, one million six hundred and forty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars and eight cents. The park fund, one hundred and three thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars and seven cents. The equipment fund, eighteen thousand fifty-four dollars and eighty-two cents. Highway capital, one hundred and forty-six eighteen. Street light fund, thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars and five cents. The general fund reserve, five hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seven cents. American rescue fund, one zero dollars. Uh, open space, Manderfield, forty thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. Search maintenance fund, two hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents. Stormwater fund, one thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents. And the escrow fund, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-six.
Impressionist. Um, I'd like to respect, given all the winds and rain that dropped yesterday. Could want to, uh, thank all of the emergency services and the fire companies who are, uh, uh, putting out fires. And also thank our road crew, uh, putting down, clearing out trees and keeping everything else moving. So, uh, this is one of the days where you really appreciate having a fire company when everything gets, uh, blocked up, falling down. Uh, rims on power lines. Just to make sure we say thank you to the fans. Yeah. I agree with that. Okay, without, uh, the last hand motion to, uh. Stop the presented agenda presented. All the second, all those signify the saying aye. Aye, thank you, gentlemen. Moving forward, in front of the opponents, uh, Brenda Bailey. Let's start with her authority. Hello, Brenda.
Uh, I am Brenda Taylor, I am from, I'm head of the National Historic Society. First, I'd like to thank the board supervisors who are on Tuesday's present time. And I asked you to be, to be, to be, to be able to go all the way. Um, the historic society, twelve years, we were trying to raise, and two down now, to complete and to issue the protection of their own. And only the society's twelve year goal of creating media that has a good position, media, both made a better place. So, it was succeeded in achieving. It also succeeded in achieving another model, so in the late twenty twenty-four, early twenty twenty-five. By establishing rich, standard within the media. Society staff members spent plenty of hours in summer jam, and two deer sign walls. It's during research on the new laws, you press the pressing, and you've got Rockville Heritage, which is eight generations. Rockville Dursack, so a Rockville township in seventeen forty-six. It's sort of what became known as the Deer Sign Mill, going both rain and lark. In the two decades, then it will become a great man who will forever pass amen. Sawmill, of Atlas Hall, as other material primary industry, building, home, barn, and furniture. It will remain a major industry until the early twenty century. Sawmill, were there to hold this township, county, and state energy blocks to die. Uh. The next thing, the cultural tax and reparations imposed by the society is to create more structure and close proximity to the system. Sort of eight hours, uh, north west side. This will be an enclosed sixteen and forty-eight structure, built how fast or slow, once owned and operated by the local family. The sawmill has been in the township for over a hundred years and helps encourage township to be what it is today. Twelve towns near or all via Rockville Township, providing it with, like, purchase the small farm on Butter Creek Road. Charles is a little bit like trading, and then up and down sawmill, like, was a silver pressure mill. Being accessible with using the gold in Bridge Valley in nineteen twelve, where they continued to grow dog food. Now, with upgrade, we need to open a new saw. Charles is a small artist, and very central, continue to operate the sawmill and the farm path. The decorations are a hundred first years later, this is for formal, the small existence that has their donors affiliated by the best values of West Rockville, the form of the prime. Sorry, the wishes to organize this sawmill along, but it's been close to unique history and access to the culture and economic think of a Rockville township. Including the source that was made to grow the local people as a source of income. Then Stanley has helped hold the statue, the way they're still being discovered. Early for the. Central was upon common of Rockville. Charlie was a heavy fan of fishermen, was instrumental in organizing early fishing derby decade in James' Royal Park. Charlie was also a principal of their efforts in township, with the installation of a book dedicated. And the veterans' farm was Charlie also shared efforts in organizing and securing funding for the veterans' farm. Located in James' Royal Park. Charlie was acting member, and sat on the board at the West Rockville Historic Society, Eric Chalke. A top four position of the board. His memory, the society would like to exhibit this is for a game of sawmill, and a closed and locked structure. Structure could also serve for society, other agricultural effects that are now supported again. Uh, as far as the port of vote, the current, the export, and the sort of, to provide a mature policy. And we, uh, checked the function for George family, they gave the blessing with the stipulation that West Rockville, uh, function, product, or policy is disenterted. Which we already for, and the policy to be county manager. Uh, so will the board supervisors recognize and raise this door certificate to the sawmill in the township and honor it again by approving its relocation. And then you have the community can definitely share.
Okay, great, well. Very good, very well done. Okay. The photograph.
Yeah, this is actually, um, I think, this is actually the Wednesday sawmill, but this is what we all would do the month of. It's, uh, it's a, but it's similar to what we have, what we don't have in us. So, this is, but it would look like other than the third floors. Um, it's building with the, uh, one to the sixteen. It's like, or this is gone. Uh, it would be both being jointly using rough type, uh, full mention chambers award. Materials be composed in natural timber or air dry oak, popular in fur. The pro, the proposed construction would include skilled craftsmen from the local mountain community. Over selling sawmill building, composed in function is Scott Britton, but we invite Scott Britton House, Master Carpenter, and our, or Britton House building. Who also gets all the windows and some of the doors and the ceiling, and I know also just work for the township. Um, we would definitely. So, that shows, for the next one as well, shows.
Question, um, what about. Herbie, the sawmill.
Proposed building, uh, would be a standalone structure that would have a phone and lock doors, no electrical service, and construction.
That's all the buttons I have. So. Yeah. Are you sure you're here tonight, then? One question out.
Yeah, just, uh, I remember the Historic Society did a trip out there, and I think they've already sent you the video that I.
And it'd be displayed in there as well.
So, you need some sort of approval from this board?
We would like to do that because.
Great, any reasons not to move forward with it?
No, if the board wants to move forward with it, I just think there needs to be something different because of exactly where the location is going to be in the park. I think you should, if you're so willing to authorize it, but, uh, direct the Historic Society to work with township staff to figure out some of the fifty different.
A lot of plans, right?
Yeah, a whole lot of planning, exact locations. Maybe.
Yes, I am, yes.
That's a good idea, yes. Very good, thank you, David, for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Well, we have, there are plenty of old, there are plenty of old outfits, plenty of outbuildings on the game farm, hoping they're longer there, so we can. There are plenty of locations we can find to put this, uh, I think. I would make a motion to approve this subject to Historic Society coordinating with township staff to figure out exact locations.
I'll say. Uh, okay, I would like to just add to that, would I do agree with this, but I want to make sure that, that this comes back to us. After they have a, a proper plan in place. Before, before, before we give final approval. Just so we are clear on this one and stuff, okay? And I think the partner rec, we'll probably share that too as well. So, thank you, so you have a motion made?
And I will adopt that as a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion made. Second, all those signify the saying aye. Aye, aye, I have it. Hey.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Moving forward, next on the agenda is the committee report, partner rec, Mr. Dave Rice.
All right. Fishing derby done. All right, here we go. All right, so we had a great day. Fishing derby was awesome. We had ninety plus kids, both girls, um, that were in the fishing derby, muddy, chilly, cold, wet, all good. And you know what? The best part was watching every single one. There's a little bit of way that play at the hour before, flashing through the puddles. And I'm just like, they go back to my child, and I still, I'm fifty-six, and I still run through the puddles. But they brought something with a video deck, and I would be out there, something, I listen to it, but that's the coolest part of it. I have a good fishing details. Um, it's just neat to see all the kids, mom, you see them, they're five, six, three, four, five, six years old, all the way to twelve, great time. Kids had a blast, and it was funny because the one little girl, when she knew she wanted goldfish, she came running halfway around the park. I mean, the fun, I mean, just full speed running with pink rubber boots on. It was great. So, I'm like, that was awesome. So, those are the kind of things that are really cool. And like, um, you mentioned, uh, the fishing derby first started in twenty, two thousand and eleven. Um, I think we haven't missed two years, one was covered, and one was a great slate, right? Gorge Day, so we had to cancel that. But we've been very fortunate through the thirteen years of successful fishing derbies. Um, and we've always tried to step our game up, so we had some guesses and stuff like that. So, like the Swedish fish and the goldfish and stuff like that. So, our youth members brought those ideas, but it makes sense, let's guess some numbers, everybody liked that kind of stuff. Um. We're very fortunate with the sponsors who came through, and they always, they always, sponsors come out and they help. So, they're our township, you know, businesses, you know, individual donors and stuff like that, they come out and they just help. That's what allows us to have the fishing derby, um, go forward. Um. One of our biggest advocates, Mr. Kaiser, is always out there, um, seeking funds for, uh, the fishing derby, so thank you, Jay. Um, and we're also very fortunate, all three supervisors, um, once again, donating fifty dollar donations to the top three biggest trout. So, thank you, Dean, Jay, and how, appreciate that. Um, that allows the young people to, big boys and girls, to come out and make this fifty dollars from each trout. Um. Not only is it our final, their financial events that we have, but again, like, like Shannon said, it's our parking wreck. They make things happen. I mean, through the years, I mean, my sixteenth year, without the parking wreck and the Benwish parking wreck, we have a blast. We have a good time doing, doing things. You're slumming around the mud, you're having a good time, it's cold, but you know what? It was fun, and you know what? We get along great, and we have a good time, so I want to thank the partner wreck, because they're awesome. Um, another big shout out is to Glenn Rice, he's our fellation guy. He comes out and he does that just for the nature, good nature of his heart. He's a good guy. And somewhere along the line, yeah, if you look at his name and spell the same spot, I think he's distant relative. So, somehow along the line, they came around, and I think his name is a fish, gives a fishing derby, and they just, you know, sit. Hey, let's like fishing. So, he comes out for like three hours that day and just plays the fish for, for fruit, so that's awesome. Um, so that's a big shout out to Glenn and his wife Shelby. Um. And then, um, the thirty-fifth September Fest coming up. We'll go to Canada, put in the green matter, write it down somewhere. September twenty-eighth, the last Sunday in September, noon to four. That's why I was, it's not really nothing to pay, you know, I'd be asking for fireworks. Um, but we set up there, so few, they're gonna be here this year, so we're gonna have to do a little extra special, something of everything. And then we have RP control of the fire October coming up. We don't have a date yet, but it'll probably be two, three weeks after, um, our September Fest. And my last comment and request to the board supervisors is, since we're, we work in cooperation with the Liberty Trail Girl Scouts. We're, um, requesting, uh, two more trees to, uh, purchase and plant it in section number three of the park plant. Which is outside of defensive left field in the further back, uh, the fifty-something field, if you will. So, it's to the left side of left field, basically. Um, so that's why I want to request, that is actually April twenty-sixth, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, from eleven to one. So, that's, they're Arbor Day, that, sorry, I don't think I said that. That's, I'll keep you on, I know I talked a lot tonight, but I didn't want to miss anybody, because I'm like, there was a lot of big, oh, big thank you. Chief stopped by, Greg stopped by, I mean, all the supervisors stopped by. I mean, it was, it's awesome to see everybody show up and just have fun. I mean, coordination over there, it was awesome. I mean, just having the officers stop by, the kids just, you know, it gets, it's, it's, I don't, you can see island.
But, so.
Yes. There's two simple words you need to say. Um, that was referring to the, the levy charge, so I could reference the voter chart. That will be all for this, so.
Um, and I asked regarding that, because Arbor Day is coming up, right?
Yes.
So, so we need to probably take action on this now?
If you don't mind, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Okay. So, uh, I want to make a motion for, uh, approving the six more trees.
Absolutely.
Okay, second, all those signify the saying aye.
All right. Thank you.
I do want to add one thing, if you're in the fishing berry, then I'll, I'll, I'll leave it alone. One of my, one of my passions has always been, because we all know how kids get involved in video games and, and play all that kind of stuff. My, my passion has always been to try to continue to keep and promote kids to be involved in the outdoors. And I, whether they're playing baseball, Little League, fishing, whatever, to get them outside and enjoy the outdoors. Um, having, having ninety-some kids come out in the conditions that we're living inside, I, I think we're succeeding. I think kids are still involved, and they still want to do things outside. So, I do want to share that, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that being said, um, I would make a motion to accept the parking rec commission report. Okay, motion's been made.
Awesome.
Second, all those signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward. Next on the agenda is, um, the conservation committee report.
Well, good evening, how are you guys?
Good.
I'm also here. Um, good evening, I'm just here to report on, um, the discussions we had at our March twentieth meeting. Um. I'm hoping our township manager has an update, do we know? Um, I'm hoping our township manager has an update. Do we know if the acreage oval have? We know they're in your possession.
They're in our possession, but, um, they're being doing pipe jobs, so there's something.
Okay. But they have them and it is now in the hands of public works to get those, um, finally installed. They have the locations and they have all the, you know. So hopefully by the end of the spring, we will finally have those acreage ovals posted. Um, twenty-one of those large landowner postcards went out. Um, we sat down and, and, and kind of looked at the different properties in the community that we thought would be good first batch to target. And with the townships, they put those out and out for us, uh, out of under them. And we did have all sorts of great intentions to be in the fishing derby. But when we saw the weather forecast, um, since we were not participating in the actual fishing, we decided that we were gonna call it a nacho. And now, I'm sorry, I missed it. It sounded like it was quite a, quite an activity. I've been in the t- t- that was gonna pass my girls when they were little, they participated. But, um, sounds like a great event. We try to get there every year, but the weather just hasn't really cooperated. So, um, at this point, that's really all that we have. Um, our next meeting will be on May fifteen. If anyone has any questions or is interested in learning more about what we do to help our community members preserve their property, you are always welcome to attend our meeting, saving a fire.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, with that being said, I'll enter a motion for approval of the, uh, conservation committee report. So moves, and looking for the nation, I'll say, second, all those signatures saying aye.
Aye.
I have it. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is commission report, Penrich video, please. Chief. Pick it up.
Board, but over the phone, um, first of all, all the staff for the pool has been hired. We have thirty, thirty lifeguards, two managers. Um, the two pool managers that have been hired have agreed to the CPO classes, which is certified pool operation classes. So they will be, if they haven't started already, will be started and finished with that by the time the pool opens. Um, we're talking about purchasing a slide. Um, so we were hoping to do that this year, but we don't want to close the pool at all. We're afraid that timeline is a good fall. So because of that, we're gonna hold off. We're gonna do a fundraiser to try to raise enough money for the slide for hopefully next year. So it's all installed, ready to go for next year. So looking forward to that. Um, we have three summer, excuse me, four summer camps that are coming to the pool this year, as well as we signed up any five teams of using pool from six till nine thirty in the morning Monday to Friday. So it's additional income for us. We're looking at getting bands for all the camps though, for all the kids, and separate camps, different bands for all the kids. So we don't miss, fix anybody's kids up. So, um, the pool installation, or pool pump, it has, they have installed the pump. Um, the electrician, I don't know if he's been out, he's supposed to be out to hook up the pump. If it hasn't been done, it should be done. We'll see. Um, the plumbing, we're having the blue line in it, so that has been coming off. So we have a contractor that's coming in to actually, uh, place that, acid wash it off and repaint the whole, all the blue lines and stuff, and do it properly. Um, so that will be done. That's going to be started, I believe, next week, um, for our, um, rec desk. We started working on training with that. It's a long process with that. Um, we're hoping to do live with rec desk by the eighteenth of this month. So we're gonna try to do pictures of anybody that's doing the pool for all the members and everything. We're hoping to start next Saturday, which is hopefully November twenty-sixth. Um, click and float. We're gonna do two of them. All two of them last year was great success last year. So we're gonna do two this year. There were, we have them scheduled, um, one for July eleventh, the other one for August eighth. So I would like to ask Brad if you could put that on calendar as well. I appreciate that. Um, postcards have ma- been mailed to all new residents within Penrich School District in the past year and a half. So any residents that moved in here in the past year, year and a half, should be aware of the pool. So we're hoping that increases, uh, some customers for us, some members, I should say. So, um, and we've also started with hanging our postcards as well on some of the new new construction areas. So some door hammers have been lined up as well. So, um, we've been doing advertising, postcards, um, we have postcards put on all the bunnies for the Easter, I, for Dan and Sellersville Borough. So everybody that received an Easter bunny will be, there's a postcard gate tonight. Um, lounges, we're looking at purchasing feast lounges for the pool this year. Uh, we haven't decided on that. Our next meeting's August, or excuse me, April twenty-third, it is, um, which is next Wednesday. Uh, so we're hoping to make a decision on pool lounges, so we'll have a few pool lounges. You know, hoping to see how well that goes, that we can stack up and wait for the winter event, too. And let's see, feasibility study. So, uh, Don's been working on getting some quotes to do a feasibility study. So we're hoping with that, and he's also has, did start this week with applying for some grants a while. Um, and then we applied to Univest, so, um, we're fingers crossed, no thing on that. So we're gonna make a decision on that as well by next week on which company to go with. Snack stand. Uh, we do have somebody that's interested with the snack stand. Um, how that is a big favor and because Shelley's been taking care of that, it did show that to somebody for us last week. It sounds like she's very interested. So fingers crossed, we're gonna have somebody with snack stand real soon as well. So, um, the next thing is donations. We've been working on a lot of donations, um, from different companies. We've received some more, um, as well as we're kind of getting some people to do some work at the pool, um, in exchange for donations. Um, or besides for donations, I should say. And, see, cleanup, our next cleanup day is the twenty-sixth, as mentioned. Um, our last cleanup day, we had a lot of people that showed up, got a lot of leaves and branches and everything else like that cleaned up. Very happy with that. I appreciate, appreciate everybody's help, whoever can come out and help. Really do appreciate it. Um, all the lifeguards, I installed lifeguards. So I'm hoping to get maybe lifeguards out to help. They all said they would volunteer as well. So, like I said, the next cleanup is the twenty-sixth. And our committees, we have fundraising committee. So we have dining donates, we have a dining donate tomorrow night at the horse. So if anybody can attend to dine and donate at the horse, we'd like to support them as much as they support us. Uh, bankers is June tenth. Um, we're going to do a flower sale um, on Saturday, the eighteenth, on the corner of Ridge and, um, oh, um, that completely, excuse me, across from Silverdale Auto, we got the permission to use their lot. So we know Sellersville, excuse me, uh, sell about a flowers a lot of times. So we're doing a, we're gonna do it Saturday. This way, if they run short, we have. So we're hoping to make some money that way as well. Um, we're also looking to attend community day. They moved it on us, so it's, we have some issues there, because instead of being the Sunday after the fourth, it's now the Sunday before, it's the twenty-eighth. So, um, we had a volunteer, uh, do a stand at the half of the mill. They had a hack in the back on April third. She did hand out a couple more applications there. Um, we had a fundraiser at Liberto's, uh, where we see three hundred and sixty dollars from Liberto's in Dublin. Uh, we had the Celtic Fest, which we received a thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars there. And, um, same day with Billy Billy Cheese State, they raised, uh, five hundred and eighty-one dollars, thirty-five cents for us as well. So a big shout out to them and appreciate all of their support. And, um, I just want to finish with saying that I know somebody had asked about financials at the last meeting here. So I would just like to say that the first of, every, the first Wednesday of every month, we do a roll of financials. So anybody that's, would like that information, report them, welcome to attend that meeting and we can give them more. Somebody wants to reach out, somebody we can give them the financials as well.
Yeah, I'd like, I would like to request that they be included in your report.
Okay.
So that, so that the supervisors can track and see what's, what's happening.
Sure.
Um, and I think it'll, it'll show us, you know, where you're at.
Yeah.
How things progressing well. I think you're doing very well.
We're trying.
I will say that you, you have, I do have one question regarding, um, that I think it was discussed before, of, of sending ladders out to, to residents to try to promote the, the future of the pool and to get people to purchase season tickets. They don't have to go to the pool to support the pool.
For donations, that's not, no.
No, they, they buy a season ticket. They buy a season ticket, that generates revenue for the pool.
Oh, yes.
And, and, and there's a lot of people that said they support the pool, but they don't buy season tickets and they don't go to the pool.
I agree.
So if they support the pool, buy a ticket, family, and then the, the pool will continue to function. I, I, I think that would be an idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway. We, we've discussed briefly a while ago.
Yeah, yeah, we did. We were hoping to, you know, we all talked to all the residents before, um, the discounter period, it just didn't happen unfortunately.
That was the other question that I, uh, did have too. I, I wanted to see how many memberships we have sort of, and track that, like, through monthly.
I was hoping to have that number for me tonight, but unfortunately, because of rec desk is still being worked on.
Okay.
We don't have all the numbers worked out because all the information's in there. I wouldn't, now we give you the perfect numbers.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, yeah, because things that will be live by then, so all the information should be on the front.
Fair.
Yeah, so, okay.
Any other questions?
I have a, I have a question. Um, who's their electrician?
Um, J D Meinsberger.
Who's opening up the pump, right?
Yes, yep.
And I was, you said, talked about Shelley, she's progressing well.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So.
I'm, uh, a couple of short call questions. Uh, could you quickly explain rec desk?
Rec desk is a software, um, a lot of the other pools, I don't know, explaining it's hard really unfortunately, but a lot of the other pools use. So when somebody comes into the pool, they'll be able to go have a badge or whatever. We're gonna take pictures. So the pictures will be on the badge. They just scan it and then they go on the web. They don't have to stop the desk, chuck anything down, you know. But this way it helps us to track the food comes and goes. And they'll be able to, if somebody comes in and purchases a day pass, just a day pass, we'll have that tracked on the rec desk as well. Um, any, if the pool closes studio, the weather, they'll be able to receive text messages that states, um, you know, getting these pools in. So I know some residents, I know mentioning, thinking about last year, the pool closed because of that effect. Um.
And then horses tomorrow, the Thursday, the seventeenth, it's five till nine.
I'm doing my, yes.
Okay, and then Saturday is the flowers, nine to two, across from Silverdale Auto, Silverdale, uh, the age of the day that fires.
Right.
Okay, they have new questions.
All right, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Um, before we, before we, that, the report, do we need to discuss the situation that they have with the lack of membership?
We do, yes.
Okay. So there was a Sellersville, um, member that resigned.
Yeah.
So we're, we're down, we're down on people. So in order to have a, um, forum, to have a functioning, uh, majority, we need to vote, as you do, they're willing to do things. We need to get, uh, another person in. We are authorized. But I believe that we are going to get a pointing cow back onto the board with his consent, of course. Until, until we can get, until someone else comes forward to get on the board. And I hope that Sellersville is doing the same thing down there. So, yeah, yeah, they, they're, okay, yeah. Uh, and hopefully they won't have anybody else leave yet. But I do know that it's, it is a challenging position, um, and you have to really be willing to work
Yes.
to, uh, to make it succeed, as you experienced. But I will say, you are showing great improvements. So we, we have given you our blessing that you're going to, it's really good.
Thank you.
So, um, with that said, I would request her to be reappointed to the, to the track record authority board.
Okay.
And we're gonna have a contact forward, we're gonna be advertising for replacement of this on the line.
We are, okay, yep. I thought we had some, I thought I had somebody lined up to come in, so we had one people and that didn't work out. So we're still trying. So how will be appointed? If we approve this, we'll be appointed until we, until we find another fellow who is volunteered to replace them. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we appoint him. Show him back on to the, uh, track record authority. I'm saying that, okay, motion's been made, second, all those signatures saying aye. I'll have, I can have him staying, so you're on. Okay. Yes, make sure you show up to meetings, otherwise we get appointed to things and find out later on. I did have one follow up yet. We didn't, we didn't approve the report yet anyway, so go ahead.
Uh, just wanted, uh, to say thank you, uh, because I was, I did give a quick presentation, uh, with some help on the history of Holiday House Pool down at the Penrich Senior Center Community Center. So first wanted to thank Penrich Community Center for the thirty-dollar donation towards Holiday House Pool. Also want to thank Tim Hucknagle from Sellersville Historical Society, who provided a lot of background information and has extensive files on the background of relocation. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, with that, I will enter in a motion for the pool of the committee board to report. Motion for me, I will send them back. All those signatures saying aye.
Aye.
I have it. Thank you very much. Okay, moving forwards, next on the agenda, Pat's question, Suzanne Clark, how are you Suzanne?
Okay, so the month of April, I've collected an annual tax of eighty thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-two cents. In twenty twenty-five, earnings, two hundred and five dollars and sixty-two cents, and a streetlight tax of five hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-two cents. Um, I just wanted to remind everyone that I do have regular section hours on Tuesdays from ten to one. Uh, extra hours for the month of April, because taxes are due in this calendar, the end of April. Um, based on my request to have morning, afternoon, and evening hours for our residents, I've shared my collection hours the following week. Thursday, April twenty-fourth, from ten to one, Friday, April twenty-fifth, from six to eight, Monday, April twenty-eighth, from ten to one, Wednesday, April thirtieth, from ten Monday, April twenty eighth from ten to one, Wednesday, April thirtieth from ten to one also. These hours are also included on my tax bill, so you can always refer to that. Also, there is a drop box says, look in, at the township building from the left of the front door, you can drop your class key during the time and do check that. Box daily. Um if anyone ever has any questions for me, I can be reached twenty four seven via email, and you also can my uh email address on West Rock Hill Tax Factor at gmail dot com. Or my phone number, two one five four by three one three six one, which is also listed on my tax bill. And that is my entire report.
And do you Suzanne, any questions? Thank you for, thank you for that, assuming people can get. So come in for these. Yeah, okay. All right, with that said there, I will uh entertain a motion for approval of the task to support.
Totally.
Motion's been made. Second, all those signify by saying aye. I'm proud of it. Thank you. All right, moving forward, next on the agenda is the NGN report, Mr. Steve Bell.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Kim. So this month we had two bid openings for road projects. The first one was for the open link bonded wearing course, which is uh. Essentially like a half inch overlay of a modified asphalt material, better than oil and just not quite a little delay of the project. This was for uh, I think this for the oldest, this is almost a little bit clamor out. Two bids with management solution, one from Krieger Construction. The Krieger Construction was the low bidder for a total base bid plus both alternate one and two at two hundred and eighty three thousand nine hundred dollars. Krieger is an existing company but new to the area, doing this type of material. Um so I would uh make a recommendation. To consider tabling that until we have time to do a little more research on that.
I, I would, would actually agree with you because I don't know them either, and this is a, this is a process that is not common. This, what we're trying to do here with the microchip. Um so I want to make sure, I would like to also make sure that we're making the right decision before we do award this. Because this is gonna be a career or sort of our development, the older development. So I would, I would share that concern and I would actually make a motion that we do table that particular bid.
The board has to say when you would next consider it and say you would have.
Okay, we'll make a decision on that, right?
Correct.
Okay, so uh um. I'll entertain a motion. Same thing as amended, twenty first, okay.
Only for the microchip.
This is only for the microchip. Okay, yeah, okay. Very good, motion's been made, second, all those signify by saying aye.
The second bid was for our, the annual overlay paving project. Um we had, we had six bidders on the project. Those roads included uh. The main roads were upper and lower Rockydale Road plus uh Brighton Ridge, that's right off of the Rockydales. Uh alternate one included Ingram's Way. Alternate two was Keystone Drive, between the township boundary with Hilltown and Old State Road. And the last alternate was North Tower Road. Yeah, the construction of opposition ground. So the low bid for the base plus of the three alternates was Heidelburg Materials in the amount of three hundred and eighty four thousand. Eight hundred and fifty eight dollars.
Now I do want to clarify something, this is the same company that did not get the paving done last year in time.
Yes, and I spoke to them today.
Okay.
They are starting the twenty twenty four project this week. Our twenty twenty four project. Right, like your project carrier. And if they're awarded the bid and we get all the paperwork in, you know, they, they sell to some bond insurance and all those things. Don't roll over into the twenty twenty five. Try and do it all in one.
Good, okay. Okay. That make me feel, because we did put in the bid, in the bid specs, that the paving has to be done by a certain time. I think Greg, you put uh the end of August.
Right, September first.
So that we don't, so that we don't run into the same situation where we're at the end of October, November, where, where saving's done, done yet and starts getting colder. We don't want the paving done when it's cold, we want it done when it's warmer. Had a job last fall. Anyhow, um so that being said, we're almost, we have to go with the lowest bidder then. As far as everything checks out with their bonds and all that, right?
Right, and they're low with, with any way you look at it.
Yeah.
Base bidder with all.
Basically, you're on forty thousand low from everybody else, right?
Correct.
Okay, gentlemen.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, you made the motion, I'm comfortable checking it, second, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye. Can I clarify that that's the base bid plus the alternates?
Yes, yeah, correct, lower across all of them. Lowest across all of them.
And one other item I have, we sort of paid attention when we skipped over it on the tenth agenda. On the uh projects about the aspire action. There is one that was on my list, it's uh no one would know exactly, but it is TG, TNG and D Land Development. Is the nicest project just below the old soul piece.
Yeah, property, yeah.
Um his review period uh only extends into May, so I'm recommending that you. Make uh a motion to conditionally deny the plan unless extension is received.
Well. I don't need to provide it anyway.
He filed a land development, trying to bring it into compliance, uh but it still needs to grant an extension.
Okay. So we're not, we're not saying deny, we're gonna grant deny, right? Okay, we have to make a decision by five four, and we won't be back until five one, so we have to roll unless we get that done. Are you making that? All those signify by saying aye. I, I don't have any question. You know, like the motion to approve the. Motion's been made, all the second, second, all those signify by saying aye. Aye, thank you. All right, next on the agenda, close me for, to Mary.
I'm here, can you hear me?
I can hear you, today and tomorrow.
Uh that's, that's terrific. There's a couple items under the solicitor's report this evening. Um the first is the um public hearing and consideration for adoption of the electronic sign ordinance. You um amend, you asked us to draft an amendment. To the zoning ordinance, which would allow electronic signs under like reasonable conditions. Not too bright, dimmer at night, that kind of thing, along the major roads in the non-residential zoning districts. Um that ordinance has been reviewed by you, by your planning commission, by the Bucks County Planning Commission. It's been advertised for a public hearing this evening, so if you'd like to consider it, you could open the public hearing and ask for a public comment.
I will do that, okay, I will open this meeting, the hearing. Does anybody have any comment, concerns? We've already had what we're trying to do here. We can expand on it.
Yeah, I don't know what you mean by expand on it, but basically what the ordinance does is it sets regulations. We didn't allow electronic signs before, it sets regulations for electronic, electronic signs and tells you. Like how bright they can be, how often the um, the, the text can change. The fact that there can't be any like video images, things that would keep it safe for the public. The brightness has to be measured in, they call them nits. And where they're permitted is along the Ridge Road, along Bethland Pike, along one fifty two. But only in the SRVC, VRPC, PC two, IS and um PI districts. They're permitted also, did I say Lawn Avenue? Washington Avenue so that the school could have one. And Ridge Road, is, is there any more expansion that like is, I'm not sure what you're looking for, for additional information?
Thank you, I don't think she really understands too much about it, Mary, but you did do a pretty good job at explaining it. If someone wants to know. Anybody that ever wants to put a electronic sign in should always go to the township first to ask if they're allowed to be used and where their plan, or wishing to be able to put one. Almost like anything that we do in the township, whether you're building something or buying something. Well, chime in, about twenty years ago, the township had been organs saying it could not have electronic signs. They have now become more common, you have them in front of the services of fire company. Uh so we're now looking back, I'm looking, they're not quite as annoying as we were concerned about, so we'll allow them. But in certain locations, but they, we don't have video because people aren't paying attention when they're driving already. So that's the idea is places where electronic signs become common and along some of the thoroughfares. And firehouses have them, a couple other businesses have them, become more common. So we're looking at allowing them as long as they make sense. Is there any other comment or concern regarding that?
Yes.
If you have, please do, please come up so you can be heard. And it's gonna be shining in our windows. I, I don't live in a residential, I live right next door. I mean, Bill Knowles, Six Old Street Road.
Yep.
You gotta shoot something like that, right?
We're not talking about.
You're not, they're not allowing them on the street road.
No, I'm.
There's, there's, uh, well, there is, there are on the road. If they go through the, like, the one that's proposed.
Right, but, but his concern isn't, I don't think, his concern is so much like daytime. I think at nighttime, you don't want lights from a bright sign shining in your window, correct? And this ordinance requires that the um, that the. The, the illumination that's measured in something called nits. The illumination drops significantly at night so that it does, so that they're not bright, it's not gonna be like Las Vegas. They'll be a lot more um. Palatable than that. Also, the ordinance provides that if it is too bright. The township approaches them, they have to turn it down, so there's, there's two, there's two different protections built in.
Who asked for the theory?
Well, uh, well, the, the concept was to put it at the park so we can advertise. So we included it to the roads that would be accessible to it, major travel for all roads that are stayed there. That's how those have gotten incorporated to it. It's been discussed for, I don't know, a couple of years now. I know, we didn't come to the names. Go ahead.
We have people that, this is a hearing, and we have people, we need names and address.
Yes, we do, so if you want to speak again, you need to give your name and address.
You need mine again, I already have yours, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So how does, why can't a park get one of these elimination signs? Aren't you a different sort of allegory? Because now you're opening up, but what you're doing to our neighborhoods. You named it well now, the body cage is gonna have a big old sign and do whatever he wants. And then again, ask for forgiveness instead of permission. What are you doing to our neighbors? You don't think, you didn't think she was gonna put all the different businesses in there? And have, have traffic all backed up on our house on our roads where we couldn't get in the chief news? Because there's officers that are there driving out there. You're tearing our, our neighborhoods.
Man, he, he, he has to go in front of the zoning permit.
I know, but we see a lot like this.
How do we see it? It hasn't happened yet.
I know, because he's got the lid in there now, it's been a couple of years, and he just keeps building, he knows what he wants.
I was only told that that started in January.
I know, because he already built what he wanted.
Correct.
Because again, do what you want and then ask for forgiveness. So I know damn well now, I'm gonna have this big ass sign. Flashing and changing and doing what it wants, and then we'll be back here and gone, oh, is he asking for forgiveness or variance on that? You guys, don't you care about where we live? What is happening?
We care very.
Do you? Charlie.
We do.
Charlie, I love seeing all the kids that we hear tonight. But we shouldn't do it because I thought, you guys are gonna understand that this is where you're making your decisions for. For these children, the decision you make today are affecting these kids. Because the truck is what you decide today, it's affecting years to come. Children, you do these stupid things. Pay a park, a firehouse, they're different than they have a sign. Not this idiot at nine oh four bitch, because that's what's gonna happen. I apologize if I'm not. Don't, don't.
Any other comments? Okay, seen that, I will close this hearing. Okay, so.
And then the next, if you, if you choose to act on the ordinance tonight. Um you could make an motion to adopt, and Greg, I'm sorry, I can't have everything on my computer at once, what's the ordinance number?
Two fifty one.
Okay, concerns, wishes?
That was the third month we discussed this, third month is, it is the third month, yeah.
Yeah, third month in a row that we've just. I understand, I understand the concerns about like. I'm real bright farmhouse on Ridge Road, so I get, I get everybody's headlight right on the front door going past. Understand everybody who has to deal with headlights and all the other detractors from being along Ridge and one fifty two and the rest. Uh this is not intended to have big, bright, you know. This isn't going to allow the pillars you have on three oh nine. This is looking at having some moderated signs, we have tried to put in different goals, so I would make a motion to approve. Resolution.
Ordinance.
Okay, we have motion made, second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next three items in the solicitor's report are all related, so um. You have a very active open space program. As part of that program, you have the uh, the open space tax under the Open Space Lands Act. You have been working with Milford Township and a property owner. To examine or consider the purchase of a property along the border, along Upper Ridge Road. Between Milford and um West Rock Hill Township. It, it's a lovely property until the agreement of sale is actually signed. I'm not going to disclose the exact identity of the property. But in order to um, there's a provision in the law that says that if you pass a condemnation resolution. Indicating your intent to acquire the property, that you, that the township can save tax dollars. In the real estate transfer tax. Um this does not mean that you have to actually exercise the power of eminent domain. You still um, and you still can and will work for an amicable resolution with the property owner. So the first, the next item under the solicitor's report is a condemnation resolution. Authorizing the acquisition of the property. Um along the Milford border on Upper Ridge Road. So, so I, it's my recommendation that, that you adopt that ordinance. Because you will save thousands of dollars in real estate transfer tax.
Okay, can you list the ordinance with the number as well?
It's a resolution, I, I misspoke.
It would be, uh, wait, this is the first one. Well, considering we have ways of reaching agreement with property owners to revert property and avoid. Paying taxes if we don't have to, I would move to adopt resolution twenty twenty five oh eight as set forth. And that's right. Twenty twenty five oh eight. So we have a motion made, second? Second, okay, motion's made in second, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And in your packets is a copy of an agreement of sale. I would ask that you make a motion to authorize the signing of that agreement of sale. When the final terms are worked out.
Okay, all right, we have a motion made, second. Having had the agreement of sale, I have no questions, I will second. Okay, motion's made, second, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
And then finally, because, um, these things don't require bank approval, you're paying for it out of your open space funds. When we get this done, we'd like to go to settlement promptly and get this in the township logs as soon as possible. So the, the second resolution and the third item under this particular matter is a resolution authorizing you to expend the funds necessary to purchase the property, to, um, buy title insurance and authorization for the chairman or the manager or the solicitor to attend settlement and sign all necessary documents to effectuate the transfer of the property into the township's name. And that resolution would be two thousand twenty-five oh nine, Greg?
Correct.
Hey, do you have a motion for that?
Uh, yes, we can, we can, we can protect the open space and add it to open space in the natural areas. It's a good thing, I will use to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five oh nine as set forth.
Right, motion for made second.
The alternate items are, they are, they are, it's second.
Yes, okay. Motion's been made second, all those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Right, um, unless you have questions for me, I don't have anything else under my report.
Okay, thank you, Mary. No questions. I have no question. All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to adopt the solicitor's report after that. I will second. Motion made second, all those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving forward, manager's report, Mr. Lookat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I think with Grace inspired ministry bond on the end of the resolution. Um, you have a resolution concerning you from, um, Grace inspired ministries, uh, Telford Lutheran home, um, and also the community of Rock. They're looking to, um, borrow twenty-three million dollars, um, as part of a redevelopment program for the wellness center, EPA systems, the design and construction acquisition of various capital improvements. Um, this, um, has been authorized into its bonds pursuant to the resolution. Um, is subject to approval by the West Rock Hill Board of Supervisors. The approval, um, by the board is evidence of this resolution will not enable the authority to finance the project without imposing any liability to the citizens or taxpayers of West Rock Hill Township. What this resolution does is give them permission under the, uh, Imperial Area Code nineteen eighty-six to borrow money, um, based off of their nonprofit. Um.
So if I can, if I, I'll just interject a sec, Greg.
Sure.
Um, sorry. The, the, the ICE, the Industrial and Commercial Development Authority law allows nonprofit entities to borrow money tax-free. And in order to do that, the, the host township for the projects has to adopt the resolution saying that they don't see any reason why they, these two entities, Rock Hill Men and Night Home and Telford Lutheran Home, couldn't participate in an IDA financing. It does not give any land development approval, it doesn't approve the projects. They still have to come back to the township and go through the whole planning and zoning process. This is just to say, it's okay with the township if you get your financing through an industrial development authority.
Okay.
That's it? We're the host township.
Well, after reviewing it, it's given us a way to support investment of twenty-three million dollars in capital in the township for longstanding businesses. I will like, will move to adopt that resolution.
All right, thank you very much, Al. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second, all those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. I stand up.
What resolution number are we at?
Rather than ten.
Okay.
The next item is zoning hearing board application for nine oh four Ridge Road. Uh, the township received as an hearing board application from ER Montai Services, uh, for nine oh four Ridge Road. Um, it's listing several variances. Uh, the variances, um, are from section four fifty sixteen hundred, permit more than one principal use on the property. Um, another variance would be from section four fifty seven oh one to allow an indoor sports facility. Another variance is to permit, uh, another existing pole barn and propose new pole barn as G fifteen flex space. Uh, this meeting is going to be held on May seventh, um, here at the township building at seven P M. The board has several options, they can stay neutral, they can be in favor of it, or they can oppose it. Um, you can decide to either oppose it and send your solicitor, or have your solicitor draft a letter in opposition. Uh, you can oppose some parts of it, all parts of it. Um, uh, I think, thank you for clarifying that and explaining that. Um, but when this was first presented to us, we, the entire board had hesitations and reservations of this. But we were assured, as all of you heard, that this was going to be a storage or collector's office, an old car. And that's all. And that there wasn't room for, for parking and three cars. And now it's the sole, yeah, now, now it's turning into four facilities. I, I, I am a resident like you are. I listen to the Navy, I, I know people that live right there. Uh, Tom Avery lives right across the street, I know him very well. I see three businesses beside the one that's being run out of the old Rock Hill Auto Service with this electrician, electric, there's an electrician running a business out of there, there's a bucket cup and four trucks, or three trucks. Was that ever applied for to the township?
No.
No. Okay. So, um, from my perspective, this is, this is exactly what everyone thinks it is. Someone that has, has come in and asked for something and completely did a one eighty. And now is, I, I have reports of forty cars being at the place at one time, parking in people's yards. Um, this is not the, we did not give the gentleman permission to do this. But it does have to go through the proper procedure. He is entitled to a zoning hearing meeting, just like he applied for. But we have to let that play out. But we don't have to agree to it. And you don't have to recommend it. And, and I can tell you right now, my perspective is to deny this, not recommending.
She, she opposed.
We would oppose. And, and what I would say is, I would support it, our solicitor drafting a letter to the zoning hearing board solicitor to oppose something that had been done like this. Because there is not parking for the amount of cars that are there. And where were the permits ever for the businesses that went in there? Did they apply for permits?
No.
Okay. So now this, this is a compounding thing.
The one in the north.
Yes. So, um, David, I'll let you.
Absolutely, no, I, I filmed it, we, we watched it two or three years ago.
Yes.
We, we've seen this movie so many times and it's, we need to, I definitely think we should afford it.
And anyone that wants to go back and do the research, we did ask the gentleman several times, are you sure we're only putting old cars in? You can find it in minutes and you can find that video, I think.
Correct.
So that means, um, my recommendation is to, to have the solicitor draft a letter in opposition, or I should say, both a correct word.
Uh, in opposition.
In opposition, yes.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to say something? I believe that, uh, I also believe that this is something which, uh, was, is exactly the opposite of what they've asked instead of what happened. So the only question that we have is whether we send this solicitor to participate. I think that the letter should be okay because this is a fairly clear, well, situation.
I would leave that up to her, if, if, if the letter's fine. Mary, are you listening?
I am lis-, hold on, I am listening. And, um, yeah, I think in this case, a letter is fine because it said, there aren't, there aren't really legal issues that you would need to go and, and, and argue case law and things like that. This is a situation where somebody's trying to put the proverbial ten pounds in the five pound bag and, um, it's affecting the community. And I think that can be communicated effectively in writing.
Okay, wonderful. Um, as you all know, if, if, if there is three businesses before, or whatever, or he's probably getting rent. Um, and I don't think anything, anything has been, uh, five, yes, yes. And I did see something on, on Facebook, sellable Facebook, but yes. So I, I think that this is the proper way to move forward. Send a letter in opposition and let the hearing play out and see what the zoning hearing board thinks. Because they are individuals, but I do believe, and I, and I would encourage the people to come here, you, you folks that live right there. Okay?
Okay, seven o'clock.
So we're, we're clear with that? I made a motion?
I'll second it. I will second, okay. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, the next item is enforcement action on twelve oh eight, uh, Buckland Pike. Um, the township administration requests the board to authorize to engage the township's solicitor regarding violations at the property referenced above, twelve oh eight Buckland Pike, and to pursue legal action if necessary. Um, the owner has expanded the driveway and purveyed surface without obtaining the required permits and adhering to stronger management regulations, additionally missing focus on mandatory buffer yards. Um, the township has also received complaints about trucks parked in the public right of way obstructing clear sight triangle dislocation. Okay, we have a motion to move forward with this enforcement. I will so lose, okay, motion made second, second. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, you were permitted to move forward with a motion. Uh, and then the next item is at last month's meeting, uh, the board authorized, uh, drafting of a resolution, uh, for the removal of the Allentown Road Bridge Resolution. Um, this is a resolution that was done in two thousand three oh six. Um, I could give you some feedback from supervisors, there's actually two in there. There's two, either resolution. Uh, one resolution shift revokes it completely. The other resolution, uh, was up close.
To make the difference with stone near, like more rural area bridge. My concerns, um, if that changes the course of, and, uh, so I would say you're sitting in a digital. But if you wanted to do that at the time when the bridge was, was being done, then you had the discussion at that time. Um, however, this is a three supervisor board, so the, uh, second one is introduced. And I will let, let the panel supervisors speak on that, whether or not we change it or we stick with number one.
Uh, uh, quickly, please, look, we were looking at, it's like, what the heck are we talking about? Um, the historical society was interested in getting grants and funding to help restore the Climber Avenue Bridge, the Red Stone Arch. Uh, so we had a resolution for three in order to support, uh, grants, and I'm saying that we support the preservation of these historic stone arch bridges. That, that revolution included Climber Avenue Bridge and the Twin Churches Bridge. Uh, since then, we, uh, some concerns about widening, we've had the, uh, flood washing that part of the bridge down by, uh, sorry, down by the Amberfield Preserve at the bottom, that was rebuilt. So I want to make sure that we have, uh, that the clarified, the PNDOT, that we are not saying, don't keep these. We've had a lot of discussion now with, uh, traffic being rerouted about the bottlenecks on Allentown Road Bridge. And, uh, my version of this, we had, at last meeting, we said we put together a resolution, so we had two versions of resolutions. One simply says we're repealing it, the second one says we're repealing it, but just to make sure we're saying we'd like to keep the historic stuff as long as it could be done safely and cost effectively. So that was my intention in coming up with the second version to say that, hey, and this would make it applicable to all the historic bridges, not just the specific ones, but yeah, if we can keep it historic, we should. If they, we need to widen it for safety sake, then okay, history has to take a sort of side route to actual practicality. They're not to get the animals, they're not to get fire trucks in the river. That's the reasoning behind this. And David, did it matter before?
You made. Okay, realistically, I don't expect a lot of us to be around when a decision is made concerning widening the bridge. For the record, and I think most of you know my position on shared. What you hear is the historic One Lane Bridge in the idyllic village of Brick Valley. The valley, the village of Bridge Valley consists of one bridge, two churches, three cemeteries, and four houses, including a historic one lane schoolhouse and the home of Ruth Richards, the Rockford Peach, a professional baseball player who passed in two thousand and eighteen and is buried in the Bridge Valley St. John's Cemetery. According to the last resident survey, what the citizens value most in West Rock Hill Township is a whole quiet historic place to raise for families. What they don't want is an open invitation to more trucks. Some here say the current traffic coming bridges not in the public's best interest. I recently drove the approaches to the bridge whilst with, from both sides. There are no less than thirty directional shed runs, slow curved signs, and speed signs related specifically to Allentown Road, not the bridge. Widen the bridge will make an already unsafe Allentown Road more unsafe. A road not engineered or built only with traffic for large trucks. Widen the bridge will increase the volume of traffic on Allentown Road. Widen the bridge will increase the speed of traffic on Allentown Road. Widen the bridge will definitely increase size and the amount of trailer truck traffic on Allentown Road, especially after the one old connector road is setting through the turnpike and Route three oh nine. Adopting a new resolution is not what citizens want, especially those living in, on Allentown Road where the historic buildings are bridged out. Be careful what you wish for.
Well, I will say, um, thank you, David, thank you for your, um, your comments. And the intent, the intent to improve these bridges to make these two lanes safe as the bridge is not to increase, uh, volume of traffic. If that was the case, they wouldn't have did it in Milford where they wouldn't have done it down in Fanta. The intent was to make sure that people could pass safely on that bridge without having bottlenecks. So that was the intent, to make the bridge safe and passable. So the resolution that we have to decide if we're going to, is number one or number two? Or none at all? And I think we're in a three way sport, it seems. Well, I thought we already did.
I thought we already did. If David doesn't think that we need a resolution to change it at all, and I want number two, and you want number one, then we have a, then we basically have to live with that in the rest of the three-way standoff. Okay. So maybe we have to compromise.
Uh, probably, okay. Well, there's no probably. Yeah.
Well, you haven't took his gun.
My, my concern is it'll just take longer, which it may not ever happen then, but, but, uh, safety is the importance of, of having a crew that can say passable bridge. And if, uh, there has to be a compromise, we're trying to make it look aesthetic, but rationally, PNDOT has not said anything about.
rationally, PNDOT has not said anything about redoing that bridge. And once it gets blocked out by a hurricane, that's going to be the bridge, we can be there yeah, pretty much forever, so we are worrying, we are worrying about making sure that what would happen if the bridge goes, which uh that's not likely to happen, we aren't looking at anything that they're funding, we have no plans for it, this is what we want to say aspirationally about what should happen. So.
Okay, we play everyone's.
Okay, any questions before we?
If you're going to take a vote, then take public comment.
Okay, yes, sir.
Yes, it was funny, so last time.
You you have to, you have to come up to the mic, sorry. It gets captured and you're not on the video.
Everybody watching on YouTube, go through your solar.
The last thing we mentioned about safety was the issue, and we asked, was there any incidents that we know about? Traffic, pedestrians, do we got that?
We had, we had a lot of incidents where the bottleneck traffic had trashed out.
No, no.
Like safety. Well, we had an accident service not public last week, right? Two weeks ago, there was an accident there.
Can you be a hundred percent honest with your brother?
Okay.
Okay. Any other question about this, that's what I'm asking for. I couldn't raise my concern about, where I do not have practice to that bridge, where people running into the back of each other, okay, basically speaking, traffic backlog. Actually, I do have a couple saying that.
Okay.
I can tell you that Allentown Road is the majority of our traffic practice. Why you say to that is, that's supposed to be doing a little bridge. Correct. I I will say that with caution. I understand what you're trying to do, trying to interrupt this assessment, but try to fix the bridge, fix the bridge, and why, I understand that. I'll just do that. Listen, I can never, what the question was raids. So I raise it again, but my point being is those bridges are like traffic devots, they're no different than a red one. Right, so Allentown Road, once you open them up to lane, you're going to see more people travel that road, and if the road is fixed, wow, the roads are ready there.
Well, the road has to, it definitely needs maintenance, the shoulders and stuff, and yes, we we understand that. But we couldn't, we couldn't look at accomplishing that without making it able to be able to have a two lane safe passable bridge.
I kind of disagree. Understand, what I'm saying with PNDOT looks at is this, hey, we'd like to redo this road, we're concerned about the bridges, let's put the resolution on the table. And the minimum to keep it store. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you for consideration.
Okay, so um, I guess if if it wants to be changed to be a two lane safe passable bridge, we will have to, we will have to amend, accept resolution number two. I'm amenable to that, saying that in some time later in the future, when I may not be here, if this comes up, but keep the bridge for it, and we'll see about making it passable. It's probably not even going to happen, or?
Well, it says the priorities to make it two, two lane passable with the historic.
It's clear, it's clearly safe. So I would, I would, I would accept uh to move to resolution number two. Okay, then I will move to accept the second version, uh, which has board clarifies any prior future use of the phrase, "In a manner of preserving historic integrity does not intend to prohibit the widening or other structural modification of any stone arch bridge. All improvements should be carried out with due considerations, both safety needs and to the extent practicable protection of historically significant features." Uh, that's the main language in there. I think that's pretty clear.
Yeah, let me know any comments from the floor.
I don't have any comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'll put that motion on the floor, you second it?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll second. Motion's made, second. All those things, if I was saying aye? Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay. The record show. The fastest two run. Okay, next on the agenda.
That's all I have.
That's all you have, okay. Any old business? Yes. You make a motion where approved advantage, which is board empty again, but motion's been made in second, all those things, if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. I don't have one thing for old business, which I forgot to ask as part of the I don't have authority, is that the twenty twenty five daily rates for holiday half school are full day seventeen for an adult, twelve dollars for a child. Uh, then you have twilight rates, if you come in after five o'clock, it's twelve dollars for an adult and nine dollars for a child. Uh, swimming lessons is, are coming in. Kathy, uh, and have to contact sales, it is up on the website, both through West Rockville Township and through Sales of Zero, excuse me, website. Nothing else? Okay, we have, okay, group and individual lessons are available. And the the discount, discount period is over, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Well, the discount period for early birds is over, there is a continuing discount for residents of West Rockville Township or Sales of Zero. They continue to get, they get a discount, so you, the time for the double discount is over, you still get the discount if you're township or borough resident. Okay, David, any others?
So, okay, new business? I did, right. Uh, there's nothing else beginning of the meeting, are we having an executive session?
Thank you for bringing that up, we are going to have an executive session tonight.
After the, yes, we're realistic.
Realistic. Okay, um, next on the agenda, uh, do you have any? Uh, I have any business, okay. Next on the agenda here is public comment, if so, please come up here, state your name and address.
Just coming up to mention, um, since it seems to be brought up tonight, um, the issue is, I'm making this about me because it sounded like shop obviously in road, but it seems like it could be an issue in our township, but businesses coming in or maybe people just going and doing other property, whatever they feel like, um, because we do have a resident, excuse me, a business next to us as well, that seem to just take in blue property and just kind of do whatever they want there. And um, we're on a private road, and our road has been maintained by the neighbors, mostly my husband and I have been like taking care of it getting support from the neighbors to do so, until this business came in and now he's kind of doing whatever he wants, and unfortunately, it's not making my house sound good, it's very painful. And he's renting space out to large um lift trucks as well. And now we have to look at, she's in cranes, large cranes, that we now have to watch these large cranes go in and out of our road as well. And I think them large cranes were the cause of our gas line debris, because these things were built in the fifties. So there are old gas lines under the road, and um, I think that was the cause of it, so we're now kind of dealing with like an issue like what they are, so this could be an issue in our township, and it's not just them, it's happening other other places as well. Okay, so I want to kind of mention.
Thank you very much. Okay, yep. Anybody else?
Be even, be even. No, I was, I was I'm through my second, I'm almost through my second part. Um, David, same thing, um, as the weather finally breaks, and we see more and more motorcycles on the road, no one is likely to drive motorcycles, but good and bad, right? I see some concern issues with the way, what kind of words are you subcontractor? Has passed and left the road, and they're laying the water lines, I'm not under any illusion of road complete and will not be fully restored when the road went uh to a road where everyone is satisfied with the results, my concern lies with what it could be called edges or ledges, some of these edges are definitive drop offs or dips in the asphalt. In some sections of the road, it's a bit fast, the asphalt settles much in three to four inches. So a car truck may not be a concern um or dangerous unless you hit that and after swerve in another lane, but a motorcycle traveling and hitting one of those edges might cause a front fork or a lot, one called potentially cause an accident. I think we must uh be mindful of the patch job that is completed now, because eventually those edges will settle even further um and deeper, so the milling overlay process might, when they do that several months from now, might be even harder to do as far as the past jobs, I'm not sure who oversees that, but will we have the, you know, we don't want any valleys or snow, um, we want to make sure the roads are properly compacted and paved. I know they're just being patched now, I understand that, um, that's probably more question if we could potentially um possible uh have a contract with the work authority amendment to add that to provision to protect the bridge road from these settling, and to, for that way, it's, I don't know what we would do, but Mary probably would have fervage on that, but I believe the sooner we address is the the patching issues, and there's one right at the end, while we're seeing, if you blink a break, you can see it right there. Um, and just with the North End Authority and subcontractors, I think to make sure that the residents who have motorcycles know they can, you know, safely drive out the bridge road so that they don't have, be caught off guard, you know, and at night, and you're driving, and all of a sudden you hit one of those, and I think you're in a ditch, so I understand, so thank you.
I will, I do want to make a comment to your comment, I normally don't do it.
I see.
But um, I raised this question to this issue previously, Greg has actually sent a letter to
Email.
Or email, she made a note, she's already maxed out the patch job. Um, and also the way they're backfilling and what they're doing.
I'll send another.
Yes, it's important, uh, the, also the restoration, the restoration that could have been done as they go. They they park in people's yards, they need to correct the township properties without permission with their machinery, so they have been notified, uh, of course, things do take time sometimes, if it's that. Uh, there's a lot of things that have happened that the township is not responsible for, the the direction, the ways, how to run it, about their thing uh communication wise, not in order with their water line, uh, it just seems like they're flying around crazy to try and work so fast and they're not doing a good job in making it as soon as we can. As we said, that patch job has to last the entire summer. So, yeah, it's closed between nine and three, but the rest of the time is open, and it's terrible driving across over the car rather than a motorcycle. So there has been action taken, so thank you for your comments, if you'd like.
I thought one, I had one thing, you do know that we stipulated, even though they're only going to work on one side of the road, to the end of the project, they go to get tied for both sides, for one end to the other. But we're on the road at the end, this is not a help.
Yeah, yeah, well, we all are commiserating with bridge order, with your shutdown, towards new property, with that, and the bridge is out on one thirteen, this view being paved, you can't get anywhere from here. Is there any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Hi, Mary, this is Valley Road, um, there were two ordinances passed tonight that I think are um, potentially bring uh what township residents want um in in our township. I just want to read from the uh, I read the plan, I think one hundred, um, the recommendations that they took, uh, points two and five specifically, so relate to the uh, the the brief resolution, just revoked it. Um, so point two, limit cartway paving with on rural rural collector streets. Um, and I believe Allentown Road is a major collector uh street, so only those improvements necessary to maintain the safety, which again, you keep referencing safety, but uh supplied no data with regards to how the uh, that bridge was making that road and that village uh unsafe.
Okay, but we won't, this is public comment. The safety issue.
I'll yield some of my time.
Yeah, two trucks, two trucks are eight foot wide, but then it can't pass on.
But the safety data, like what what has it, has anyone been killed at that, at that bridge? No, you shouldn't, okay. Has anyone been like injured at that bridge during like slow traffic?
We don't have any. Okay, there, there is a study that I think goes back eight years or so, which is looking at uh topic on the two bridges now on town, the one up by uh a manishel preserve and the one down here, which was studied a while ago, but we haven't had much updated information, but bridges and roads haven't changed, it's still drop off in your gut, or just the curve when you're in somebody's yard.
Right.
Only a rock.
Right, and it's because these these roads were were built to to human scale, um, these roads were built long before cars were built, long before tractor trailers were built. Um, I think a lot of people would like to say that way, um, I think that uh, the the more uh, the changes that are like starting to occur, this electronic sign ordinance, um, look like a very um strong pushing of tearing that bridge down, turning it into a two lane bridge, already at a very curvy area with dips down, like you you're I I think, I think the supervisors need to consider in the the future development, that human scale is actually the most important thing for the flourishing of your residents, um, and if you don't know what human scale development is, you can uh look up what that means, but essentially it means that you should build your cities and your towns um for the human, for the resident, uh, that means walkable, safe, pedestrian driven, uh, not car driven, not um truck driven. Um, so yeah, the fourth, the fifth point of uh the recommendation, explore traffic calming techniques to increase safety for pedestrians and bicyclists in villages and walkable areas of the township.
We have to make sure.
That's, that one speaks for itself, like Milford Valley is.
Thank you for your comment. And I just probably, I, we do understand that, uh, I did have to tell them that part of this concern is what was once human scale over time is no longer, when I was a kid, I could ride a bike up and down Ridge Road. And my grandmother used to walk from the farm on Thousand Acre Road down Long Avenue to the job at the mill at the very bottom of Long Avenue and back Hill Road, and then walk back, you know, you're never going to do that now, but we do have to with some of the ways that things have changed, and that we still got to keep them uh at the correct scale, although right now cars have gotten bigger, people have gotten bigger, speeds have gotten higher, so we're glad. Any other public comment? Okay, take your time.
Yeah, we have a welcome five hundred and child and child. Question, especially after yesterday's storm, it came the breaking skies and the wind was blowing like crazy, we lost our power forest in the afternoon. Who is actually responsible for the dead trees along all roads?
The property owner is responsible for the business.
Okay, so I guess I can go outdoors and tell people, we've been taking trees down for the dashboard after that happened. I, when I walk Tower Road, it's like a sea of dead trees, and it's like
You you can also give me the addresses and I'll, you know, and I will know them.
Tower Road.
Is that, I guess a little.
It's one of the, I'm like, I'm going like this, I'm walking, and it's, it's crazy. It's fine, you don't really have trees, because it's new, but Tower Road is just hard.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comments? Gina, I want to take a motion to close the meeting and move into executive session, motion to make, I will second, all those things, if I was saying aye? Aye, thank you all for coming out and giving input.